This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, May 11th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Landon Adams, Anonet Word Ministries, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
By head, Father God in Jesus' name, we invite you to preside over this morning, even as we have our different opinions, give us unity of the Spirit, help us to learn from each other politically, as others share their point of views, help us to work as a team in combining ideas for a great outcome, help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals, trying to promote others' agendas. May we have a spirit of unity in this room and work together as we share our missions, even as we pray for our mayor and the leaders and every official of this city in the match of the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
For the nations, to the flag, for the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We would first ask that you turn off all silence, all electronic devices before or upon entering the meeting. Any person to exiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state both his or her name and address for the record. Any person designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak by 2:00 p.m. All of your commentary must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. If it isn't, then you will not be granted that opportunity. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to make their presentation. A bell will sound indicating the end of your second minute and indicating that you have 60 seconds to conclude any presentation. At the end of that second bell, all of your time has elapsed. When addressing the council, there shall be no direct or personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to myself as I serve as chair, and then any council member who subsequently wishes to be recognized will be given that opportunity. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. These are the rules for this particular meeting, and thank you for your interest in our municipal government.
Approval of minutes of May 4th.
Some move.
Second.
Probably moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. It's good to see everybody here this morning. This morning, my first remark has to do with a lot of discussion that we had earlier in the pre-council meeting regarding trash pickup and that we're behind, we're letting everybody know every evening, also through our website, you know, where we will be the next day on picking up trash. We appreciate your patience and understanding regarding this. As we look back over the last several years of the equipment that we've been using, you know, because of the hurricanes experienced last year, and because of the inordinate number of hours that were being put on the equipment, you know, I think that the maintenance became a challenge, especially as we were dealing with older equipment which needed to be replaced. New equipment has been ordered, but because of just delays in getting delivery of large vehicles, we are behind on receiving some of the replacement vehicles. But we have explored every avenue that we are aware of to try to make sure that we pick your garbage and trash up. In order to help facilitate the picking up of yard trash, for those that would like to move their own trash, we have located four dumpsters at this point into strategic locations where you can take your bagged yard trash, no garbage, trash only, yard trash, and those locations are the Medal of Honor Park, Langen Park, Seals Park, and Tremere Park. We are looking at the possibility of maybe locating on a couple of other parks, and if we do that, that information will be forthcoming shortly, or be forthcoming soon. This past weekend, on Saturday, that we had a good turnout for the Trash Free Waters Day cleanup in the Three Mile Creek watershed. We had approximately 70 people and picked up about 500 pounds of litter. Mobile Baykeeper, the Fuse Project, and the Mobile Capital League, we thank you for what you did trying to turn out your membership to help us pick up the trash and the litter along Three Mile Creek. This Saturday, there'll be another trash pickup in the Baumhammer Randall Park from 8:30 to 11:30. I'd like to welcome Casey Callaway. Casey, raise your hand. Everybody, we think, knows Casey Callaway, but she started yesterday as the new administrative team member with the title of Chief Resilience Officer, where she will work to bring individuals, nonprofits, businesses, and government together to solve problems big and strong, like litter. That's the first, okay. Also, I'd like to announce that, and this is, we have been repeating this announcement in the last several weeks, but we will have the USS Mobile Parade on Friday, May 21st, starting at 6:30. It'll be Route A1, and we will publish that route so that everybody understands the, how this parade will flow. Again, starts at 6:30, and at 9:30, it'll be followed by a really large fireworks display. So that'll be real exciting as we lead into the commissioning of the USS Mobile on Saturday. Actually, the commissioning ceremony, the Navy has restricted the number of people that can attend, but there will be some big screen, jumbo screens at Cooper Riverside Park, so anybody that wants to go participate in the festivities, it'll be a lot of fun at Cooper Riverside Park. It won't be all the Navy protocol there. Nothing about Navy protocol, but it may be more fun at Cooper Riverside Park. Also, this week is National Salvation Army Week. I'd like to remind everybody that during the COVID crisis, the Salvation Army stood tall. They never closed their doors. To my knowledge of all those that are assisting those in the greatest need, they were the only nonprofit organization that did that, and for that we're tremendously grateful and would encourage your support of the Salvation Army. We have selected a team. We put out a press release last week regarding this team, and it has to do with the design and engineering for the upcoming Africa Town Welcome Center. This group consists of design firms, nonprofit organizations, many had a lot to do with, or they helped facilitate and build the National Memorial for Peace and Justice in Montgomery. For those that participated in the process and the selection process, I think that given the collective experience of everybody involved, it would be hard to choose a better qualified team. So from now, we go to defining the scope of the work. That scope of the work and the contract has to be approved by the Treasury Department because of this being restore funds, funding it, and once all that is done, then it'll flip to the city council to approve that contract. Last night, I had an opportunity to attend the Mobile Midtown Optimist Club Dinner, and it's where, really, for the last 40 years, the Midtown Optimist Club has recognized our Officers of the Month. So because of COVID, we've not been recognizing them, but this, last night, we recognized 16 and gave them their certificates and medals and so forth. But Alabama Attorney General Steve Marshall was there, did a great job, from my perspective, inspiring our police officers, but also for everyone that was in the audience, helping us realize how fortunate we are to have the men and women serving our city in the Mobile Police Department, and those that, when duty calls, they run to the action instead of running away for it. So anyway, it's very inspiring, and we certainly appreciate all the hard work of those outstanding officers, those that were recognized, plus our other men and women in uniform. Finally, the last announcement has to do with the Carnival Sensation coming into the Port of Mobile this Friday. We're pretty excited about that. It's a big deal. They come in here to be vaccinated. We've reached out to Carnival and said we want to do everything that we can do to help facilitate cruising. And so through a series of ongoing communications, they have agreed to send the ship here. There'll be 110 crew members onboard. Volunteers who have been handling the, from volunteer, well, I say it's not volunteers, it's the staff at USA Health, they will go aboard the ship, and they will administer the vaccines. My understanding is that three weeks later, the ship will come back in for the crew members to be re-vaccinated. There'll be no, the crew members are not allowed to get off of the ship. Based on the success rate of our USA Health team being protected from COVID, I feel quite certain they will be able to protect themselves, administer the vaccines, and get off the ship safely. But that's the first concrete major step that we know of, of having the cruise ship, you know, come back and start cruising. This time, we don't know when that opening day may be, when they actually here to accept passengers, but again, we're doing everything that we know to do to help facilitate that. So we would encourage anybody that's excited about the Sensation coming back to town, come down to Guff Quest or Cooper Riverside Park on this Friday around 9:00 a.m., and you can wave your flags or banners or your hand or whatever, but help us welcome them back. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. President.
Hey, good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
Is it possible that, since Ms. Casey Callaway is in the audience, that she can come down and address the council and tell us about her vision and everything?
Yes, you can. Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I am so excited to be here, so excited to be a part of the team working for the City of Mobile. I will tell you, I'm on day two, and I intend to spend the first few weeks really learning. I have, I know what I know. I know a lot about the environment, I know a lot about community, but I know very little about government, as y'all can imagine, being in one job for such a long time. I know what you care about most, though, all of you, and I think the City of Mobile, and the mayor and I talked about it briefly this morning, but from day one, it's going to be a priority project to look at, how are we handling litter? What are we doing with litter? And then we'll start looking at the bigger projects, too, of how do we get, how do we integrate the work that we're doing, what the city's doing, with what nonprofit organizations are doing, with what businesses and industry are doing, so that we can streamline that work, and we can make sure that we're actually incorporating what's happening on the ground with what's happening in city government, to make sure that we are ready for any storm that comes our way, ready to handle it, and most importantly, in my opinion, ready to bounce back from it stronger and better. I think what the city did with all, what all of you did with handling COVID as a challenge, you handled it well, and we need to, and came out financially ahead, came out strong in so, so many ways, especially compared to other cities around the nation. So we got to make sure we put that in writing and we're ready for it. We look at what that looked like and see how do we use those same best practices for the next disaster that comes our way. But I work for y'all, and I am excited, too. I'm excited to be a part of this incredible team, and I, but I also know that I have a whole lot to learn, so y'all have to bear with me and give me, give me some tools. I'm looking forward to it.
Mr. President. Yeah, Ms. Callaway, we welcome you to the City of Mobile. Very excited to have you. I can get off of Colonel Delap and get on your, on your back. You get off his back. Not just District 3, but our city has a bad litter problem. And basically, a lot of businesses contribute to our litter problem. And, you know, question to you or to the administration, what department are you going to work under? What authority could you have to make sure that businesses are fine with trash and debris that is flowing off their property onto other properties and to our waterways and et cetera?
I think, and y'all have to correct me if I step out, y'all let me know, reel me back in. I think the reason that the mayor hired me into the Strategic Initiatives Team, which is formerly the I-Team, is so that I would work across departments. Litter is not one department's job or one person's responsibility. What I hope to do, and looking at the past, you know, many years of work in a nonprofit focused on litter, with grants for litter abatement across the board, and Rob Nikvist, the man who brought litter to all of our attention during the BP Oil disaster, we, what I want to see happen, the nonprofit communities have a whole plan. They've worked out, they've got a work plan with measurables and a whole product. The city has multiple different ways and plans that they're looking to address litter. We've got businesses that want to address litter, so my hope is that we get all of these departments. We look across what everyone is doing and figuring, figure out how to make sure that the right organizations, the right people are doing their work, that those who need resources to do the work are supported in it. Personally, so forgive me if this isn't necessarily the city's direction, personally, I don't believe it's government's job to solve it. I believe it is everyone's job to solve it. And I want to see nonprofits and businesses and the government, all of us, working together to solve litter. And I know that's a massive undertaking, but I know there's education, there's enforcement, and then there's actual, there's, there's abatement, and then there's also cleanup. So we've got four major kind of focus areas that I want to see us working in, that I believe the city is really committed to, and certainly our nonprofit organizations are committed to. There are eight environmental organizations that have a work plan. Dog River Clearwater Revival and Mobile Bay Keeper, the City of Mobile, Mobile Bay and E.P. have a whole plan that's been written through a grant. There's so much work. We just, work done. We just have to make sure that we're all looking and singing off the same song sheet, and I think that's, that's why I was brought in. Is that fair?
Yeah, I truly do agree with you that litter is the city problem, including citizens, not just the government. But I'm a firm believer, if you don't chastise a child, the child won't keep on acting up and up and up. And until you chastise that child, then they start getting, you know, straight, and that's the same thing with businesses. If the businesses are never fine, you know, residents are never fine, they're going to continue to have trash and debris, you know, out there and blowing everywhere. But again, I know a lot of is enforcement, but I'm happy to have you aboard. Again, what, what department are you going to follow up under?
I work, I work in the mayor's office, the Strategic Initiatives Department. So I'm, I'll be in and with all the departments.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But enforcement is real, and I totally hear you on that. We've got to make sure we're focusing on it, and I'm excited to work on that effort.
What floor are you on?
I'm on the second floor. The I-Team is on, or I'm sorry, Strategic Initiatives Team is on the fifth floor. So far, I've spent 10 minutes in the office, so I don't really, I'll be everywhere. My cellphone has not changed, so if you have it, you can reach me. Thanks y'all so much, I appreciate it.
Mr. President.
I'd also like to welcome Ms. Callaway to the, to the City of Mobile. I think she brings a lot of skills that we need in the city. I've had the opportunity to work with Ms. Callaway over a number of years on a number of different projects, and I have a great deal of respect and admiration for, for her abilities and what she's accomplished. I'd also like to say that I agree with what you said about the litter problem, while government has a place in it, government can't solve it alone. It's a problem that's going to, that the community is going to have to embrace and solve together. Certainly enforcement has a place to play in that, but we, the, as you went and ticked through all of those things, building the partnerships across organizations and across neighborhoods is vitally important, education is vitally important. There are a number of different initiatives that I, that I think you support and will get behind. That's the only way we're going to move the needle, is to have a community-wide effort to solve this problem.
All of the above.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
I would like to also commend Casey for coming on with the city, and I would like to just say that you have this unique opportunity. We have had numerous of groups and people to tackle, to tackle litter, and they all made some progress, but the end result, it failed. That's why the mayor is bringing you on. He doesn't want to fail. So I'm saying, you got, you got this unique opportunity to make a difference with this litter, and I have no doubt, knowing you, you'll figure it out. I don't know what you're, what you're going to do.
No pressure, though.
You'll, you'll figure it out, so welcome aboard, and looking forward to working with you in a way that I can.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Certainly glad to have you aboard. Mr. Rich?
Thank you, I have a proclamation.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to go to where we normally used to go in the olden days. I'm replacing this room with every one of these things. I'm going to read it, and... This is really an honor and a privilege to do this. Whereas Rappa Hope and Adoption Rocks will host the 5th Annual Touch a Truck Event on Saturday, May 15th, 2021, in the parking lot of the Hank Aaron Stadium. And whereas, to benefit Adoption Rocks and Rappa Hope in their efforts to serve the needs of children in our community. This family-friendly event offers children a hands-on opportunity to explore a variety of machinery by touching, climbing aboard, asking questions about their favorite vehicles, and to meet the people who build, protect, and serve our community in a safe environment. And whereas, Rappa Hope has been bringing joy to children diagnosed with cancer and their families since 1985, as a nonprofit organization which offers free year-round programming, including its flagship summer camp, as well as weekend and day-long campers' opportunities for families to have fun together. Their goal is to help campers have life-changing experience filled with as many amazing moments as possible. And whereas, Adoption Rocks is an organization dedicated to loving, embracing, and enabling women who are seeking information about adoption as an option for their unplanned pregnancy, as well as those who seek to build families through adoption. Now therefore I, Best Rich, Councilmember of District 6, along with the mayor and members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 15th, 2021, Touch a Truck Day in Mobile, and urge all our citizens to join us in this momentous occasion.
All right.
We'll do a picture, but they would like to say a word or two, so we'll, let's do the picture, and then I can run back, and we'll just show this. Great. All right, you did a great job, and there you go.
Thank you.
Okay, and if you want to take the microphone and introduce, and I'll go and touch that.
My name's Ralph Neal, I'm with Rappa Hope.
I'm Janie Allen with Adoption Rocks.
And I'm Brooke Schrader with Rappa Hope.
Rappa Hope and Adoption Rocks would like to thank the mayor's office and the council for y'all's support this year, and we look forward to future support in the future. It's going to be a great event. Thank y'all very much.
Mr. President, I have, I would like to, I have a letter that, well, I sent a letter to the mayor's office yesterday, and I want, you probably have not had a chance to read it. Mr. Mayor, I sent a letter to you yesterday, I just want to reiterate the importance of that letter that I sent yesterday. I received a letter from the Callahands. They own a house that opened in Uppam in O'Shea. And since 2020, they have had numerous of vehicles to crash onto their property, numerous of vehicles. So they, they have a big, a brick wall around the property, and these, these vehicles crashed through the brick wall and onto their property, and there are children, animals, and all. So they went to Aldott to see if they could get permission to build a barricade there to prevent the cars from coming in. So Aldott said it wasn't their call, that it was a, it was a city's responsibility. So they went to the city, and the city said they, they were not going to build a barricade, that they would put a piece of tape on a pole to remind travelers not to crash into their yard. They didn't like that resolution, they went on to say, at Tuthill and O'Shea Road, they had the same problem, and the city erected a barricade. But in the last week, two, they've had two crashes, two vehicles come into the, so what they did, they built a metal fence to protect the house. Once these cars kept crashing through the brick wall, they built a metal fence around there. Well, this week, they came through the fence, bricks, they came through all of that over into their yard. They are at Wits End. They would build a barricade. They would put the barricade up. So you, you can't put a barricade up on city property, can't no private person build a barricade on city property, and that the best the city can do is put a piece of tape up out there, and hopefully that when travelers see that, they won't do that again. I'm, I'm going over that because I think something ought to be done, I think something can be done, and I would like for you to particularly look at, look at this letter and read what they, what the issues that they are having, to see if you, you in public safety, whoever this, can come up with a solution that they are at Wits End out there. They don't know what else to do, and they, they need help. And to see if there is a way to work through this and come up with something that'll help protect them and their property that they have invested in. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, and may I have a seat a quick?
David Clark.
This will be fine. This will be fine.
Good morning, Mr. President, City Council, Mayor Administration, David Clark with Visit Mobile. As you know, front and forward in our organization for some time now, has been to help collaborate and turn the Clotilde and the Africa Town story into an experience, and we're very passionate about that. And about a year ago, through the Chairman of the Board of Visit Mobile, Dr. Bill Barrett, comes a resume across my computer with the name of Arian Morrison on it. And through that collaboration, through the graciousness of Kathy and Forrest Latta hosting Arian, and being an intern at Visit Mobile for the last eight months, she has done one of the most important things that I think will transform the Africa Town and Mobile story of the Clotilde and Africa Town experience ever. It will play out to be profound. It will play out to be profound in the success of tourism for Afracatown. What Arian has done in eight months is spending thousands of hours of researching the truth of the story and putting it into a script, of script one draft, script two draft, collaborating with an immense amount of stakeholders, has been nothing short of miraculous. I wanted to introduce Arian to you this morning and let her say a few words. She is a junior in a half at Harvard University. She has been living in Mobile during this remote time and working closely with SCAD Pro, the immersive experience, the film documentary, the Afracatown Collaborative, some of the city councils, some of the county commission, and many of you to put this together. This is a very heavy lifting thing that she's done. And we are so proud of Arian. I'm just so thankful. I think it's sort of a god thing how this all worked together. Because you know, she grew up in Kokomo, Indiana, and just to have her during this time has been a real blessing. And I think we're always going to remember Arian. I think she's always going to be a part of our family in Visit Mobile and Mobile. And I'm sure that we're going to try to have her as an ad hoc kind of situation as she goes back to Harvard and completes her studies and social studies. And remember, she was first in Mobile in 2018 as the national champion of distinguished young women. So I'm going to introduce and have Arian come up and say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, David. You, Emily, and truly the rest of the family at Visit Mobile have truly believed in me from day one. And with this belief, you have translated it into an outpouring of support and resources. And with these resources came one task, and that's just what you said, to research the truth and write it down. But this task was never going to be simple. In fact, the past eight months of research and writing have provided evidence of something that I have known all along, that truth comes from a variety of places. There is truth in the work of historians like Dr. Natalie Robinson and Sylvia Deuff. There is truth in the work of archaeologists like Dr. James Delgado and Justin Denovant. There is truth in the oral history archives at the local history and genealogy branch of the Mobile Public Library. But most importantly and most essentially, there is truth in the lives, knowledge, and experiences of the community members that call Afracatown home today. My research is motivated by the fact that there are many types of truths, and that each one of them has a place in the story that we should be telling about the 110 survivors of the Clotilda and the community they founded. But the truth is also that my place in this process is that I'm not the most qualified to script the story I have been tasked to script. What qualifies a good storyteller is never that they come from Harvard, or that they won the Distinguished Young Woman program, but it is their ability to do research. Over the past eight months, I've read the books, I've read the archaeological reports, and I've listened to the oral histories. In short, I've done the research. But there are people from Afracatown that have been doing the exact same resource, research. And in some cases, they have been doing this research for longer than I have been alive. They are not only more qualified than I because of their years of experience, they are also more qualified than I because they have access to a type of truth that I will never be able to know. The truth that comes from this story being theirs. From their first breath to their last, they will have lived this in a way that no other researcher, regardless of their affiliated university or their titles, will be able to understand. And at the end of the day, it is the truths of these descendants that have kept this story alive. Without them, the other researchers and I that have happened upon this story would have never been able to accomplish any of what we have. For years, these people were denied their truth, and this is a well-documented fact. But their truth has inspired Doctors Robertson and Deuff to write their books. Their truth inspired oral historians to record the daughters and granddaughters of the survivors of the Clotilda. And their truth inspired Ben Raines to go diving for the ship in the Mobile River. And now that the ship has been found, their truth should inspire nothing short of public belief and their knowledge of their history. My task was to research and write the truth. Over the past nine months, I have done as much as I can, but I can't complete such a task because I'm simply not the most qualified person. My work shows the limits of an outsider's ability to tell the whole true story of the 110. I deeply believe that the city of Mobile, that you all that sit before me today, are committed to elevating the true story of the survivors of the Clotilda. After all, that is why I have been given the support and resources from Visit Mobile that I have been given. My greatest hope, when my work concludes, is that descendants and community members alike will be given the same support, trust, and resources that I have been provided with over the last eight months. For years, they have done such incredible work without these resources. But a true commitment to telling the whole truth means recognizing that their stories and their knowledge are more worthy of direct investment, the same direct investment that was made in me. I have been transformed by their truth, and when the proper investments are made, I believe that all of Mobile will be transformed too. It has been the honor of a lifetime to work and learn from the people who have carried this truth their entire lives. They didn't need me, but I needed them. The future of this work doesn't need me, but it does need them. A commitment to truth needs all of us to center them, to support them, to believe them, and to understand that we are all in their debt. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
Yes. I would like to congratulate Aaron for the outstanding job that you have done. We appreciate you coming down to help, help us understand the true story of the Clotilda. I would like to ask you, in your research, did you determine, first of all, the Clotilda didn't come down the Mobile River because it was blocked?
Yes, sir.
It came down the Borden County side, it came down the Spanish River to 12 Mile Island?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then a little distance from the 12 Mile Island is where, my understanding is that the slaves were put off the ship, and the ship was burned. Is that your research?
That is what my research has said, yes.
Did you determine, excuse me, how long the slaves stayed in that swamp with snakes and alligators and all other kind of creatures? Can you determine how long they stayed out there before they were picked up?
I could provide a little bit of insight on that. So from my research, from what I've understood, when the captives were forcibly transferred from the Clotilda onto another steamship that took them further up the river, they were then removed from that steamship, and just as you said, hidden in the swamps and the cane break with all of the wild animals. The research that I've done suggests that they were hidden in that way for anywhere between 11 to 13 days. What we do know is that the Clotilda arrived back in Mobile at 12 Mile Island on July 9th. And by July 26th, there were articles appearing in newspapers all over the region that some of the captives from the ship were being sold up the river. So they were hidden anywhere between the days that transpired from July 9th to July 26th, and of course, probably a little bit shorter than that because the sales of these people and the separation of that group of survivors would have happened around the 24th or 25th of July.
Okay, did your research show that they were chained together?
Some accounts say that they have been, that on the ship that they were chained together, that that was one of the whole marks of the voyage.
Did your research, did your research show that they were without any clothing?
It did.
So your research showed that they was put off in the horror of this swamp to remain the, this is what I'm saying. I think the people got to see, we got to give the people something they can see. I think the people need to see the horror of what happened to the 110 people. They got to see the horror of what, because what happened, they survived that, and they ended up at Afracatown, and they lived great lives, and they produced great families, and they went on. But it was enough, this was enough to stop them in their tracks for the rest of their lives. But they were so strong that they went on. But I think we, what I would like to see happen, I would like to see some sort of building, put there 12 Mile Island, glass that you can drive there in a boat and get up there. And I would like to see figurines out there in this swamp with these children and grown people chained together without any clothes. And I would like to see alligators and snakes, fake alligators and fake snakes heading toward them. This is what the people got to see. We got to give them something they can see and feel. And then go back over to Afracatown and see the artifacts, is how I see it.
Yes, sir. I'm excited that this kind of commitment to truth is the commitment that lives in this room, and I hope that that's the commitment that continues in the work that everybody involved in Afracatown, not just me, not just Visit Mobile, but all of the people that I've invoked in my script today are committed to delivering.
Okay. And Mr. President, I just want to close to say that Osi and Anna Kebe were on that ship. Osi and Anna Kebe. My daddy's oldest brother, William Richardson, left Nips and moved to Mobile. He married Helen Kebe, the granddaughter of Osi and Anna Kebe. I am an indirect descendant of the Clotilda. Just want to get that in your record.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, I'd like to commend Mr. David and his whole entire organization for the hard work that you all put into this Africa, you know, Afracatown. When I first got on council, I was criticized in my home district for, you know, trying to put some spotlight, you know, in Afracatown because I believe, what I know, that it's a great treasure that Mobile have, a great treasure that has, the story has not really been told. And when the story had hit national news a couple of months ago, I had several friends to, you know, say, hey, we coming to Mobile, we want to see Afracatown, we want to see, you know, the place where the last slave ship was known to be at. And which was, you know, great news that people said, you know, they want to come to, you know, Alabama, you know, not just Alabama, but Mobile, Alabama. And knowing that, that will bring in many tourists and, you know, revenues, you know, into our city when people come to visit on these sites. My question to the young lady that's doing all the, doing the research, have you ever attended the museum, the Lynchon Museum in Montgomery, Alabama?
I had the distinct pleasure of attending with my host parents, Kathy and Forrest Latta, at the beginning of this experience.
Yeah, and I believe what Mr. Richardson is saying, and what I'm about to get ready to say, is we want our story told better than the story that has been told in Montgomery. People travel all across the United States to come to Montgomery to visit. I forgot how many numbers that actually had visited Montgomery so far, but this museum had really had drawn something. And again, this is something that they had put downtown. We had a real thing, you know, right here. And pretty much, we want our story be told better. We want thousands of people to come right here to Mobile, Alabama, because again, we have a great treasure. And anything that this council can do, and I believe I can speak for everybody on this council, you have our support. Anything to move our city forward, especially bring in tourism and to tell our story, we ready to support. Get it. And again, thank you all so much, and looking to be there this evening.
Thank you, sir.
And one more thing, I just want to say thank you again for Arian for doing a lot of the heavy lifting and the collaboration. And to you, the city council, for your tremendous support in helping to turn this story and experience into that fact tonight at the Hope Center in Afracatown. The State Department of Tourism is coming in to do a workshop. The theme is Building Entrepreneurs for the Afracatown Community. That is from 6:00 to 8:00 tonight. And again, from 8:00 in the morning to 10:00 in the morning tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the Hope Center in Afracatown.
Mr. Clark, and to, can you give us your name again, please?
Arian Morrison.
I just want to publicly thank both of you. On behalf of all of the residents in Afracatown Plateau community, I have the distinct honor and privilege of representing that community. And one of the reasons I ran for this office was I saw it as an area that had been overlooked, under-respected, and disrespected in many respects. And we worked hard with this administration, with nonprofit groups, and most importantly, with stakeholders to turn that tide. And now with the finding of the ship, there is a bunch of energy and synergy, and it's going to take perspectives like yours, coupled with the historical perspective of the descendants, that in people who are indigenous to that area, for us to get our story straight. But I agree with Councilman Small, 100%. We have a unique, a unique story unlike any other communities. And if we do right, if we listen to the persons on the ground and the families of the descendants, respectful of their wishes, and if we infuse capital into that community, it will pay off, not only from a financial standpoint, but most importantly, from a historical standpoint. That community deserves every ounce of attention that it's getting right now. And it's because of the hard work of persons like Mr. Clark, the associations of talented persons like yourself, the stakeholder groups. There are more groups now in Afracatown than ever before. There are more folks claiming to be descendants now than ever before. And that's because we finally have a, some energy behind this project. And so I pray that as you move on to finish your matriculation there at Auburn, and anywhere else that you go, that you consider Mobile to be home, to Afracatown, to be a part of your story now. And however you can work to contribute, to make it an even finer story, I know that you're welcome, and we are interested, and you have leadership here that wants to see the story told right. So thank you to you, to Mr. Clark, to fine staff at Visit Mobile, and to all of the stakeholder groups. They don't always agree, and that's unique to Afracatown too. You can always find a difference of an opinion, but they have an opinion, and they want that opinion heard. And we're going to make certain that that opinion is respected. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything I can do, I'm indebted to the descendants in the community. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
But probably moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on June 12th on Elmore, Elmore, Mo, Elmo Avenue, May 22nd on Navco Road, June 5th Windmill Drive, May 15th Cathedral Square, and June 5th Clemente Court.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Janice Robinson.
My name is Ms. Robinson. I'm in the Crichton area. I have, I have about four issues I want to address. And I have-
Ms. Robinson, if you could, state your name and your address for the record, and if you could speak as close to the microphone as you feel safe speaking into it would be helpful.
My name is Janice Robinson. How about that?
Yes, ma'am, that's better.
I live in the Crichton area. My address is 2725 Josephine Street. I've came here, I think this is my third time about this traffic on Josephine Street. We have traffic with the, the speed is 25, but these vehicles, motorcycle cars, going like anywhere from 55 to 78 miles per hour. My neighbors on the street are anywhere, the most, the majority of them is anywhere from 71 to 98. They can't, they afraid to check the mailbox. When I was here the last time, my city councilman, when I brought it to the, your all attention, sent me to the mayor. The mayor sent me to his assistant. His assistant sent me to Traffic Division. That is when I learned that Josephine Street- That is when I learned that Josephine Street, the Traffic Division made it a, what they call an emergency street lane. We can accept that because it's coming from, when they turn off of Mobile, they have a straight shot at Bay Shore Avenue. But what we don't, and shouldn't have to accept, this traffic that coming up and down the street where you can't even walk from your house to across the street to your neighbor's house. And I'm speaking also, I'm speaking not only for myself, but for the resident on that street also. I came there when I was like 12 years old, and I'm almost 70. I'd never seen nothing done to that street far as asphalt. We need that done. I take pictures, and I send them here. I don't know where, who they go to, I just send them to this 208, 208 number, you know? And it's so much traffic have came down to that street, to the asphalt break it up, and the car blows it on the side of the street. Now, I have, I can't tell you the last time we had someone to come and sweep our side. We don't have a sidewalk, but our street on the side, you know, right before the mailbox, you know what I'm talking about, the side street. And I know for a fact, I've been there over 40-some years. Nobody. I don't know if some of you, somebody have couldn't cut the funding, but I remember seeing this when I was a young person.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, all of your time has elapsed.
Okay. All right.
Any questions of Ms. Robinson?
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson?
I represent, I represent the area of the city that Ms. Robinson is talking about, Josephine Street. And I wanted her to state, to tell her that the law forbids the council from interfering in administrative matters. Ms. Thompson is in charge of every city employee, every city, every piece of city equipment, all city's property, and all of the city's money. He's in charge of the finance department. So whenever a city, a citizen requests something that is going to require one citizen to do it, it's Ms. Thompson. So all I could do was send her request over to Ms. Thompson. And based on what she's saying, they have refused to honor her request. For one thing, we, we can't put speed humps down there, although the mayor has suspended installing speed humps because it's a fire lane. But we could put a stop sign down there to stop, we can stop the traffic. I haven't had a request for a stop sign to be installed on it since I've been on the City Council. Every request I made been turned down, I don't care where it was, they refuse to install a stop sign. It's a, it's limited how you can get from Mobile Street to Bay Shore Avenue. But Josephine Street is a direct shot. And she is not, she's not joking about the traffic because they have to go to a street. It's like trying, if you live, if you live, if you're trying to go north and south in Crighton, Tovenville, any of those midtown, you got, you got Florida Street, you got Sage Avenue. You're not going across, you're not, there's no other streets to go across. You're locked down because those are the two streets. If you want to go to the mall, you got to take one of those streets or get on the interstate. So those streets are busy because those are the only streets that people can go to get north and south. Well, this is the same situation with her. It's a limited, the streets you go, you can go around and stop, turn left, go right, and then finally go over there. But Josephine Street is a straight shot over there. And it is painful, tragic, it is, it's everything she said it was. But all, all we can do is advocate as councilmembers. We can advocate. We can turn it in, we can report it, but we cannot order anybody to go out there and pick it up. It's not a council issue, it is an administrative issue, and it has been sent to the administration. And based on what she's telling us today, nothing has been done, it's nothing. I just want to make it clear to everybody that's listening, there's nothing I can do about that situation as a councilmember. It would take the administration, it would take administrative action to clear up that problem.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Reggie Hill.
Mr. President, members of the council, to the administration, citizens, stakeholders of Mobile, good morning.
Good morning.
Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. I arrived today to discuss a few agenda items that I submitted in to the City Clerk's Office. Beginning with 21-332, this is the agenda item pertaining to the docket software. We know about the annual reporting that is supposed to come from municipal courts, and my question would be, will this software be anything to help towards eliminating the high volume that we're seeing increase, probably why we had to utilize the civic center? So I just want to know the details, the purpose of that line item. Referring to 01-024, if there could be a brief breakdown of the amendment, an overview of this new chapter enforcement. I didn't see any serious details about it discussed this morning, so I'm hoping that that can be addressed today. Regarding 08-340, I'm ecstatic to see these long overdue improvements being made to this area. I just want to know which CIP cycle are these funds from, and what would be the remaining balance of this CIP cycle, and how can we obtain that information? Excuse me, one, my notes, okay, all right. 08-345, someone addressed this this morning during the pre-council meeting, but they didn't come to the mic, so I know that I couldn't hear it on YouTube. I just want to know what would these cameras be used for? And then 31-348, is a grant related to the new, is this grant related to the new Africa Town initiatives, or is this for a separate project with Alabama Historical Commission? Could we get a breakdown on what the grant will entail? And then lastly, the 08-330, I was very appreciative of the sentiments from our, the student's finance committee chairman, the longevity of these equipments. I didn't mention anything on equipment last week because I had communicated with the administration as well. They informed me last week that I would be submitted a form in which I could obtain information on the requests that I've made previously. And so I just want to know, is there any follow-up on getting that form? Because I'm still waiting for it, and instead of me having to come and question these inquiries down here, it'd be much easier to just submit the information. So if any of those questions need to be repeated, I would love this week for someone from council or administration to respond to those inquiries. And always please be reminded, these are in reference to tax per dollars.
I thought you were gesturing in a manner that indicated you might have some commentary. Do you have any commentary?
On which of the items? He listed about 10.
On any that you might have commentary on?
I think it's probably best if we get the list, which I'm assuming someone has, and then probably do a consolidated response, I would think, is my recommendation.
Well, I asked one regarding the Crawford Park amenities as well, so that can be answered by the council. All the questions don't have to be answered by administration.
And I'm barely hearing you. Say that again.
If you recall, I asked about 08-340, that is a council matter that does not have to be answered by the administration. So all these questions do not have to be addressed. And as I mentioned at the end, I communicated with the administration two weeks prior to this, that's why I didn't ask any equipment questions last week. I'm just waiting on the form from the administration. So there are questions that the council, particularly in.
What in particular was your question about 08-340?
08-340?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, okay. Well, I first commended you for making sure that these amenities are put in place, this was long overdue. My question was, which CIP cycles are these funds from, and what would be the remaining balance?
I believe this is coming out of this fiscal year's CIP.
So it's for this year's?
This current year, yes, sir.
Okay. And how can we obtain the balance, the remaining balance for, for the CIP of this cycle?
You probably would need to contact Mr. Colonel Delapp's office, and he should be able to provide you with that information.
So you don't submit those requests? But, well, not you, I mean, every council member, they don't submit those requests individually?
Well, we work on the CIP listings in its entirety. So we plan a year out at one time, and then that particular program is placed on the agenda and voted on by all members of the council. So it's a very public process. In Crawford Park's perspective, we have charrettes, we have the community's involvement. It's not something that I just simply chose sitting up in my office in the ninth floor. We had community engagement, deciding how and what pieces of playground equipment would go where. But to answer directly your question, it's a part of the 20, the current fiscal year's CIP program.
And so if each of y'all sit down and mitigate on that and decide it, and it comes to the agenda and it's passed, that means we have documentation of the amount that has been spent for that particular cycle, correct?
I, I didn't hear the rest of you, the very end of you.
You were saying that it comes to the council, and then it is approved, and then, so that means that it's documented in the minutes, on the record. So that means we should have some type of information in relation to the amount that has been spent or approved, which again, allows it to come to the council and not necessarily have to go to the administration.
Well, the council does keep the running tab, because the tab escalates or accelerates as items come on the agenda, which is why Mr. Delapp, I believe through Ms. Jasmine Washington's office, has that up-to-date information.
Well, for time's sake, this would be my last question.
One second, Mr. Hill.
Okay.
I can make the request for the up, for the balance as of today, and make certain that you have that information.
Okay. And just for clarity purposes, because I would have thought that we could have just added them up from them being on the agenda. So are you saying that there are items that may get approved on the agenda that aren't followed through on?
Am I saying what now?
Are there agenda items that are approved, where we could take that, the statistics from that and add up the amounts that possibly are not being completed or followed through on? Is that a reason?
There are projects from previous fiscal years that have not been completed. Yes, sir.
Mr. President?
Mr. Davis?
If I could just take a minute, because Mr. Hill raises an issue that I'm not, or a question, that I'm not sure we have spent a lot of time talking about in the past. But.
One second, Mr. Davis. You could be seated, Mr. Hill. Your time has elapsed.
I mean, if he has a question.
No, I don't have any questions. I just want to comment, I just want to comment on the issue.
He doesn't have a question, Mr. Hill. You may be seated.
So if he invokes my name, I don't have the right to respond?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, thank you for using the floor.
Yes, sir.
As Councilman Manzi has pointed out, the capital improvement plan process is a very detailed, time-consuming process. All of the city council persons take, and the first step is the city council persons take input from their districts, from the people who live in their districts. I know a number of us, including myself, when we renewed the penny last time, I sent out a card to every single household in District 5, asking for input on what they'd like to see done over the next five years. We extended, last time we extended the penny, we extended it for five years. So that we could put together a five-year plan that reflected what my constituents were interested in, and I know the other city council persons did the same or similar thing. That information is taken and matched up against 311 calls, where citizens have called in because their street needs to be repaved, or their street's flooding, or they want something done to a park. And it's put together with that. Then it's also put together with items that the different departments, traffic engineering, parks and rec, the city engineer have put together items that need to be addressed. Now, obviously, when you get this list, there's a lot more on there than there is available funding to address it. So what happens then is each of the council persons meets with, with representatives of Mr. Delapp's department, with the chief engineer, with the traffic engineer, with parks and rec. We sit down, and we go through all of these items, and we come up with a five-year plan. Then each one of the, so then you start to really get down to, to nuts and bolts when you're looking at the next fiscal year's plan. You have a five-year plan, but it's, you know, it's pretty firm in the first year, but kind of fuzzy in the fifth year, as you work through this, because things might come up between now and five years from now. So, so once that plan, once, once, as Councilman Manzi said, once the next fiscal year's plan is identified, what's going to happen in each district, then that plan is adopted by the city council. Then comes the process of actually contracting out the work. So the question, going back to Mr. Hill's question, the question of how much is left in the pot is a very difficult question to answer, because for, certainly for this fiscal year, you're in a process where you know what you're going to do, but it hadn't all been contracted out. And even the ones that have been contracted out, a lot of them are being paid on a piecemeal basis. So there may be money left in the District 5 CIP for the current fiscal year, but it's obligated. And there, and there may be money, we haven't, we haven't started spending any money in the District 5 CIP for the next fiscal year, but we know what we're going to do by now. We're pretty certain what we're going to do, and so you can say it's obligated, too. So I just, I thought it was important, as I said, we haven't had this question kind of come up for a while, and, and as Councilman Manzi again has pointed out, this isn't, this isn't where a city council person sits around and arbitrarily says, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, without any input from anybody else. It is a very iterative process that involves input from a lot of different sources before it actually ends up being engaged. And it's also, as Councilman Manzi pointed out, we have items from last fiscal year that haven't been initiated or completed yet. So there's just a lot going on in this program, and I'm delighted we did it, I'm delighted the city council renewed the penny in 13, was the first time we renewed it for three years, and established a capital improvement plan. I think it's been, I think it's been transformative for the city of Mobile. And it's not been an arbitrary process, there's a lot of thought and a lot of work on the part of the people who work for the city of Mobile and executing on it. So, thank you very much.
Can I comment, if I may?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I appreciate that commentary, because it really does lay out the process. And speaking of the process, when can the council look forward to having the meetings for the next CIP?
Ms. Washington will be sending out a schedule for those, and I think she's got one planned for June 22nd, I think is the next date, if I'm not mistaken.
And we, we met as individuals, and we also met as a full council.
Correct.
So you're anticipating doing exactly the same?
Both.
Because we're a little behind, we normally.
Not too much, but yeah, but we're doing both. And as you know, we're putting a little more rigor into the five-year, the out-years beyond the one, this, this go-around, as Councilman Dave just described, so.
Right, but the only one that's voted on is the.
Correct. The ones adopted is the next year, and the other one's a visionary plan. for the future, yes. That's right.
Okay. So in the next few weeks, the council will be going through this process for CIP?
I know she's got the quarterly update, I think, planned for June 22nd. That's the full council, but I, June 22nd for the full quarterly update. But the individual ones, I don't have the schedule in front of me where she has, where we're going to sit and go through, as Councilman Dave just talked about, to go through in detail in your district, the one year. But it will be coming up in the next 30 days, for sure, because we'll need that to be able to then finalize the plan, and then, of course, submit it here for review and approval.
And August 20th, everything is to the council for, as proposed. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah. Colonel Delap, if possible, before we have our meeting next month, if the council could have the information as far as in, for the last three years, of how much the city had received with the one cent sales tax over the 21 million that the council had, or had, was designated, for the last three years, we can get that amount, and also where did it actually went to and everything.
We'll do our best to try and pull all that together before that meeting. I mean, obviously, the primary focus is on what we're talking about, which is trying to plan it. But if we can, we're going to try, we'll try and pull all that together.
Yeah. A question was asked about that, and when the council had the whole meeting, maybe that could be presented at that time and everything. Thank you so much.
Yeah. That's really been the struggle, and it's more financial to isolate that penny, which we also put into perspective for economic development and also a police and public safety apparatus or equipment. We gave percentages, well, no, we didn't do percentage. We probably might want to look at percentage, but it was the 21, three per council, and then 5.2, I think, went for public safety, and four something, because we were basing it at the time on about bringing in about 25 million. But I do think those numbers are up. And, but it's hard to isolate that last penny, so to speak.
Ma'am, City of Columbia?
Resolution is held over. There's no objection. I will take all of these together.
We got to take, we got to take 21, 331 separate.
Oh, we have to take that one separate. Okay.
That's going to lay over a week.
Oh, 21, 331. Okay. 08329, approved purchase order to Technical and Scientific Application Inc. for Elite Desktop Computers. 08330, approved purchase order to Samsung Equipment for Garbage Trucks. 21332, authorized contract with A14 Government Corporation for Municipal Court Docket and Document Management Software. 21333, authorized contract with Pyrotechnico for Independence Day Fireworks Display. 21334, authorized contract with Espalier for Matthews Parkfield A Improvements. 25335, accept two permanent sidewalk easements from the trustees of Fulton Road Baptist Church for Dalton Island Parkway Sidewalks. 60336, approve award a special bonus to Parks and Recreation Department Employee of the Month.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
21331, authorized contract with Gorm Air Conditioning Company for Mobile Sanger Theater Mechanical Upgrades. Layover one week.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Order is to be introduced for the first time. 01024.
But council ruled this order to be laid over one week.
Consent resolution is being introduced for the first time. 58337 through 60339.
Mr. President, motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration for consent resolutions, 58-337 through 60-339.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
58337, authorized removal of weeds, Group 1613, 60338. Approve award a special bonus to the firefighter of the month. 60339, designate the week of May 16 through the 22nd as National Public Works Week. So moved.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time. 08340 through 08341.
But council ruled these resolutions would be laid over for one week.
Resolution is being introduced for the first time. 08342 through 31348.
But council ruled these resolutions would be laid over for one week.
Announcements?
We'll start today with Ms. Miss Casperich.
Well, thank you very much. Just want to remind everyone about Touch a Truck, which really is a wonderful children's event. We have lots of fundraisers that go into good causes, and they're usually for adults to attend. This is strictly for children and families. A carload of as many kids as you can pile in is $20, and it goes to those two groups that came down to represent at the proclamation, which is Adoption Rocks and Camp Rappa Hope. It truly is a fun event. The first hour, and I believe it starts at 10:00 a.m., we might want to double-check that, but the first hour is specifically quiet. You're not allowed to honk the horns or make the sirens go before children that might be sensitive to that. And that's also advertised, the kids that need a little more time to adjust to that fun event. And I've been many years, unfortunately, I have a conflict this year, but literally, when it's getting ready to wrap up, these kids are like, "I don't want to go," because they get to sit in a garbage truck or a police car, and it's truly like their dream come true. So get out there, and I hope the weather will be cooperative and make that a very fun event for all the people that pull that together. I read yesterday where our CARES Act money is due to come into the city in the next two weeks. It's rather rapid. And my sources, which did not come from the administration, but said that the city of Mobile will get 60 million, and the first half would come in the next few weeks. If we could get some understanding of what the administration knows, I think that would be great. I know there are parameters and exact things that the money can and cannot be spent on, but this is something that will generate some interest in the community, no doubt, and because we watched that legislation move through Congress and the Senate, and that was a lot of information that got dispersed at that time. But now the money is coming through. So if there is anything that could be added, that would be great. I wasn't expecting necessarily an answer, but if you have something-
Well, I don't have a specific detailed answer for you. I can confirm that the money has been awarded, and we should probably see the first million, 30 million within the next week or so. We've already talked to accounting about it and where we're going to deposit it, and we've got active participation coming up between all the departments over the course of the next week to identify how best to spend that money. And we will be sure to make sure that you all are included in those discussions.
Right. If it's contractual, it will come to council, not necessarily for operations. But if we could be in the loop as you're disseminating it, the other thing of interest is that, and tell me if I'm right about this, it's a very quick turnaround that they expect the money to be either spent or allocated towards your initiative.
They expect it to be spent by the end of 2024.
That's quick.
Yeah. It's a lot of money to spend in a short period of time. And if you'd like, I can-
It's not a bad problem to have, but at the same time, it's got to be-
Well, it'll be a challenge, but I think, you know, everybody's anxious to get started on it. And I can, I can make available to you the documentation that came out. You know, there's some abbreviated documents, and then there's a lot of detail that might take you an hour and a half to read through, but I can make that available to you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That's it.
Just to put some emphasis there on what Ms. Rich was just saying, Mr. CFO, we don't want the program already constructed and ready to be implemented, and then brought to us, and just want us to vote on it. In other words, we don't want all the ingredients to the cake stirred, and you know how much sugar's in there, how much nutmeg, how much spice, and all you want us to do is beat a hot oven. We want to be at the table to make certain, these are some unique funds, hopefully suited for some unique abilities and capabilities. And we want to make certain that we know, so that we can advocate, and all of us put together a plan that matches the uniqueness of availabilities of these funds.
I would just say that, given the amount of money that's coming our way, it's going to probably require everybody's participation in order to spend it in the most efficient and productive way that we can. So that can only be accomplished, I think, if we're all working together on this and identifying the project.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remind the citizens, especially in the North DIP and the Maysville community, and the mayor had mentioned it earlier, but there will be a community-wide cleanup this coming Saturday from 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. I have sent out several communications electronically and also snail mail to the citizens inviting them out to Von Hara, Run the Park, which is also known as Duval Street Park, which is located at 1909 Duval Street, again, asking all citizens in that particular area to come out. I have reached out to several volunteer groups and asked them to come out who can help to spruce up our community. And again, this will take place this coming Saturday from 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. And on next Tuesday, I have an important announcement that I will be sharing with District Three about some good things that we're about to get ready to reveal at one of the parks.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Joe Davis?
No announcements.
Mr. John Charles Williams?
No, thank you.
Ms. Janet Grayler?
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor announced earlier that he had attended the Midtown Optimist Club's Officers of the Month Celebration last night, and I was able to attend along with Mrs. Rich, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Richardson, and it was a terrific event, recognizing these officers. They had to play catch-up from January of 2020. This past weekend, on Saturday, the Overlook Heights Community Improvement Group held a cleanup. This was their first official cleanup of their, well, since they've been established, which has been very recently. And they did a great job, collected a lot of litter, had a great turnout. So just many thanks to them for their efforts. I just want to update everybody on Ziegler as well. Of course, the work continues on. We just finished two weeks' worth of drainage work that caused the road to be closed. We are getting ready to start working on another section up closer to the park that will, again, cause the road to be closed, but we'll be putting out plenty of information ahead of time, as well as look for the detour signs. It's the same detour that we had earlier, so everyone should be familiar with how to get around that area over closer to the park. St. John United Methodist Church will be holding a COVID-19 vaccine clinic that will be on the 22nd, that's a Saturday, from 8 until noon. Of course, everyone is invited, no appointments necessary. St. John is located on Overlook Road. And also, just a reminder, you heard earlier, if you have trash, this is the yard debris, sitting on your curb, and you're tired of waiting on the trash trucks to come, just take those bags to Langen Park. You can drop them off there, and they will be picked up, and that way you can get them off of your curb, and you will also help, hopefully, get our schedule back on track as well, because, of course, the more that is on the curbs, the longer it takes our crews to pick up. So if you've got it bagged, just go ahead and take it to Langen Park, and then that way you will help everything along a lot quicker. That's all from District Seven. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, would like to commend the Optimist Club from District One, the Midtown Optimist Club, for putting on the tremendous program, eyeing 16 police officers last night. I was two in attendance there, and the speaker was Steve Marshall, the Alabama Attorney General, who did an outstanding job. It was well-attended, and I appreciate them putting on this outstanding program. I attended the cleanup Saturday that was staged at the Tricentennial Park for the parking and surrounding communities. This program was sponsored by Bake Keepers and volunteer groups, including the Capelig, and they showed up in numbers, and you couldn't find a piece of paper within a mile. I commend them for coming out, sticking with it, and cleaning up not only the land part of it, but they cleaned up along Three Mile Creek. And the city of Mobile is limited, is limited, the areas that you can get into, creek and canoe, kayak, those points are limited at Tricentennial Park. We have a lunch there for kayaking and for canoeing. Those people who want to canoe up and down Three Mile Creek, all you have to do is come to Tricentennial Park, get into the creek, and have yourself some fun. So it's a jewel that a lot of people don't know anything about, but it is the, it holds, is the home of the only freshwater lake in the city of Mobile. Lake, the, we have, in the center of the park, we have Day Lake in the center of the park. It is not connected with Three Mile Creek at all. It's 34 feet deep. In the center of this lake, we have water coming up, where at night it changes colors. It's a fountain in the center of that lake. And when you pass there at night, it is a wonder to see all of those multicolored lights coming up out of the lake in Tricentennial Park. So if you haven't been over there, you need to go and visit the Tricentennial Park. It is a beautiful park. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have I overlooked anyone? Wonderful, wonderful. Just want to start by thanking the leadership there at the Corinthian Missionary Baptist Church, Dr. Cleveland, Mr. Campbell, for their hard work in organizing our latest food drive giveaway. It was held there this past Saturday, and we are appreciative of their continued support. We are blessed as a community to have churches like Corinthian, like First Baptists, Yorktown, True Vine, and others, who are working with us in order to help those who need the greatest level of help. So thank you to them. Thank you to Feeding the Gulf Coast, one of those quiet organizations, doesn't do a whole lot, doesn't ring the bell much, but they get the job done. And when citizens are in need, they're there to respond. And they've certainly proved that throughout this horrendous pandemic. A lot of ribbon cuttings and grand openings do we need to have, starting with the new bleachers and amenities there, kid park, including lighting. For years, the community has just been all but begging for lighting for their football team and others. I remember campaigning and seeing the parents have to get in their vehicles and surround the field with the lights from their cars in order for the kids to continue to practice. That's no longer the case. We have over $275,000 worth of lights. That's not including bleachers and other amenities that we need to have a grand opening for. And we'd move a little closer to Africa Town and go to the Hope Center, where there's a new playground. We've got a new basketball court at MLK that needs to be open. We have a new seniors park in the Lafayette Heights community that needs to be open. And then we have a new basketball court and playground at Rickham Park that needs to be open. A lot of this has been postponed due to the pandemic, but as we move towards some semblance of normalcy, we will be scheduling these ground, these grand openings and the groundbreakings for the improvements we're doing at Lions Park, and also, when it passes on the agenda next week, the improvements at Crawford Murphy Park. There's a lot going on in our district, and as always, while we might not be sitting in your living room or in your dining room as normal, I'm certainly accessible. Call me 251-509-4239. Facebook is a great option. Texting is certainly available. There's a lot going on, and we will be your advocate to try to weave through- There's a lot going on, and we will be your advocate to try to weave through the bureaucracy of city government. It can be done if we all work together. So that concludes my announcements. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second?
We probably moved in second. That we would adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Means adjourned.